Well, then, let's go ahead and open our regular meeting. The Monday the 20th edition of the regular Canyon City Council meeting. And would you call the order, please? Oh, I guess we should do that. Is there someone here for invocation? Okay, well, let's, would you join me in the pleasure of allegiance, please?
The pleasure of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much. Would you do the roll call, please, Kathy?
Mayor Troutman.
Here.
Councilmember Schumacher.
Here.
Councilmember Gill.
Here.
Councilmember Weed.
Here.
Councilmember Shoraki.
Here.
Councilmember Meisner.
Here.
Councilmember Smith and Ekstrom are excused. We have a quorum.
Thank you. We would then go for approval of the minutes for the June 6th City Council meeting and the June 8th General Government Meeting. Do you have a motion? Mr. Weed?
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the council make the motion to approve the minutes of the June 6th Regular City Council Meeting and the June 8th General Government Committee Meeting as presented.
Okay. Well, first of all, are there any corrections anybody would like to make? Okay, hearing none. The motion has been made. I would seek a second.
Second.
Mr. Meisner, second. Would you call a roll, please?
Councilmember Weed.
Aye.
Councilmember Meisner.
Aye.
Councilmember Shoraki.
Aye.
Councilmember Gill.
Aye.
Councilmember Schumacher.
Aye.
Approved by unanimous vote.
Okay, thank you all. Are there any councilmembers that would like to have announcements at this time? Mr. Weed?
Thank you. Just a real quick one for those who pay attention to these things. Our regularly scheduled Public Works Committee meeting, which is typically held on the Wednesday after council meeting, will be postponed until next Wednesday, the 29th.
Mr. Meisner?
Our Public Arts Committee meeting will be Thursday, 4 o'clock here? Here, next door.
Okay. Anyone else? Mr. Gill?
There's a Planning Commission meeting tomorrow and a workshop here right next door. Starts at 6 o'clock and then the meeting starts at 7:00 and the public's invited.
And that agenda I saw was in the paper yesterday or today. The agenda was in the paper for the Planning Commission today. So, and the work sessions are open to the public.
They are.
Okay. Okay, anyone else? Then I would like to bring up, Mr. O'Rourke has passed all of you a seeking customized proposed questions for the citizens survey that will be conducted for our town. And in there are some parts that might stir your questions or thoughts. Please read that over. We'd like to get questions back to Mr. O'Rourke quickly so that we can engage the company that's going to do the survey for us. So, please look those over. I would say we'd like to have them back by weeks and/or beginning of next week. If you could do that, please. If you have any questions, please call Mr. O'Rourke. He doesn't seem to be real busy right now. Just kidding. So, he sits next to me. But this, of course, is a survey that we're going to do of our residents and to see where we stand on several issues. So, please take a look at that and let's get that in as quickly as we can. Okay? All right, well, let's move to adoption of the consent agenda. The agenda, and the consent agenda, agenda. Would you, Tony, would you please review the agenda items?
The first item, 4A, would authorize the closure of 6th Street from the alley north of Main Street to the alley north of Macon Avenue. And from Macon Avenue, from 6th Street to 7th Street, from 3:00 PM to 10:30 PM on September the 10th, to host the annual Italian Festival. 4B would authorize, as the mayor just indicated, an agreement with National Research Center of Boulder, Colorado, in the amount of $14,670 to conduct the city's first citizen survey, which will be conducted of 1,500 homes, a scientific sampling of the homes in Canyon City. Survey will be administered by mail, though an online option is available to those who are selected. There'll be 77 questions about the community and city services that people will provide feedback on and rate. In addition, the mayor just made reference to the, some customized questions that the council will design. And we should get the final results in early October, which I know we're all looking forward to. Item 4C would authorize innovative HR solutions to conduct a confidential city employee survey of our 155 full-time and seasonal employees to help identify organizational strengths and opportunities for improvement. And that would be at a cost of $9,462. And that survey, if the council would execute that agreement tonight, that would commence next week. And then finally, authorizing the purchase of 130 three-quarter and one-inch water meters for the water distribution system from Finish Line Systems, which is a distributor for the Neptune meters, which is what the city utilizes. And that's at a cost of $32,240.50.
Okay, and then there's a list of bills there as well. So, are there any additions or corrections to the agenda? Hearing or seeing none, could I have a motion, a second? Mr. Weed?
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the council, I make the motion to approve, to adopt the agenda and consent the agenda as presented.
Second.
Second. Kathy? Is there any discussion on the motion? Mr. Meisner?
I don't know that this is appropriate at this time, but this series of questions, to me, made sense. But from a personal standpoint, I'm just not sure I understand the other questions in the survey in terms of what are we going to do with that information? Or how does that information come back to be a benefit to us? And how does that information come back to us to developing a strategic plan?
Briefly, I can address that. One, you're going to get feedback for the first time, an official qualitative and quantitative analysis of what the community thinks about our various services, from police to water and all the services in between. So, that's a value to tell you what your strengths and what your opportunities for improvement are as far as city services. In addition, there's lots of qualitative questions in the survey relating to what I would call quality of life, people's sense of safety, people's sense of recreational opportunities. That will, and then we ask questions about where people would like to see the city invest this money. That will be very profound in helping give you direction as to hearing from the public what your strategic priorities should be and to focus on what the needs and expectations of the community are based upon these results. And in addition, because many of the questions are standardized nationally, you can then compare and benchmark your results with over 500 cities in America and Colorado, which helps you determine, you know, where, kind of where you sit in the classroom, given your grade. It's one thing to get a grade, it's another thing to compare your grade with everyone else in the class. And helps you, again, fine tune where your strengths are, where your opportunities for improvement are, so we can address the expectations and needs of the community.
Thank you.
The only other point I have, Mr. Meisner, is that sheet that was given to you with, that's what a survey would look like, but we would have the questions put in that. So, where you said, it has X, Y, Z, et cetera, there will not be A, B, C. It will be specific questions. And just in case.
I feel better now.
Okay, thank you. Would you call a roll, please?
Councilmember Weed.
Aye.
Councilmember Schumacher.
Aye.
Councilmember Meisner.
Aye.
Councilmember Shoraki.
Aye.
Councilmember Gill.
Aye.
Approved by majority vote.
And then could we have the administrative report, please?
My report is succinct. I continue to enjoy working for the city.
The only thing I would like to highlight is, I do want to recognize Bill Miller, who is proposing to retire after 43 years with the city. And that's a phenomenal legacy of service, and I think he should be recognized. And we will be recognizing him and other employees in upcoming meetings for going above and beyond. But certainly, I want to recognize his long and successful tenure with the city and wish him well in retirement. Envious.
What positions or positions did he hold? I'm afraid I don't know.
He worked for the streets. He's worked for the cemetery. Most recently, he's worked for the cemetery. Part of his time, most recent, was the customer service out at Public Works. And then also the cemetery, a lot of the cemetery, a very devoted, committed employee to public service.
Well, congratulations, Mr. Miller. That's great. Okay, at this time, we'll have citizens request to speak to City Council. We have several people that would like to speak. And if you could hold that to three minutes, we will time it. Do you want to announce those names and have them come up? Okay?
First is Cheryl Blackhill, 403 and 1/2 Main Street, number nine. She wants to speak to council in regard to parking.
Okay, I would like to, before you, go ahead. You can, in there, that, we are working on this issue. And I probably misspoke when I talked or was interviewed by the paper. Really, it wasn't the downtown merchants. There were some people that came in and talked, but they were not representing the downtown merchants. So, that was probably my error. But there were people that were concerned about parking. The city has several different ways that we can go on it. We are looking into it. We have asked Mr. Havens to draw up different amendments or changes probably to it. But the bottom line is this, I think that the government can do only so things. We can make laws. We can enforce those laws. And I guess we can choose to ignore them, which I don't think is a good idea. But I also think, though, that the landlords and the owners and everybody sitting here today ought to sit together and talk this over and then give us direction on what you want to do. This comes up, been here a long time, this comes up about every four years. Take it off, put it on, take it off, put it on. That doesn't work real well. So, I think that we need to sit and talk. Everybody has a stake in this. The tenants, the landlords, the retail people, even the variety of retail people. So, we need, and we'll facilitate that as a city. And then we'll go from there. Okay? Having said that, please go right ahead.
Thank you.
You could pull, you could pull that down.
Pull that mic down.
There you go. Thank you.
I think you pretty much covered what I was about to say. I do think that everybody does need to come together as a community and talk about this parking issue. And there isn't any reason why we shouldn't be able to come to an agreement or an understanding that can help all of us live okay here. I've, this, I'm new here to Canyon City. I've only been here about a year. I ended up here by accident. I found a great job. I really liked my job here. This might be my home. Right now, I'm living downtown. It is my second apartment downtown. I think downtown is a beautiful place. I just feel that us residents, just because we live downtown, we're not the rats or roaches of society. I do have a good job here in town. I do spend my money downtown. I do try to keep my business local. I was taught that in college. I do have a degree that I could someday have a business of my own here. So, if everybody's listening, I did do a petition downtown. In one eight-hour period, I did get 70 signatures. A lot of them are tenants and business owners and residents, employees. I heard a lot of stories, and I do understand everybody's point of view on the story. I see what everybody's saying, but I just feel that there's got to be another way than making residents and people walk in the dark for unsafe reasons. And it's my home. It's where I relax. It's where I want to be safe. I don't want to have to park long ways and walk in the dark and stuff. So, yeah, that's about all I wanted to say. If you guys did want a copy of my petition, if I have to continue on with it, I will. But I would prefer that everybody get together and, yeah, let's work this out as a community. Make it safe for everybody.
Is your preference to give that to us now?
Yes, I do.
Okay.
And this is just an eight-hour period. I'm sure if I did it more and more, I could get more signatures. Thank you very much for your time.
Well, sure.
And have a great night.
Sure, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, can I ask a question?
Yes, ma'am? Would you? We have councilperson want to ask you a question or two.
Sorry, sir.
That's all right. What would you think, or what would, what would your idea be as a citizen that lives downtown?
Not being here very long, I really don't have that suggestion for you guys. I'm still trying to come up with one for myself.
Uh-huh.
When I do, then maybe I can be more of an input. All I know is all the stories that everybody that's been here forever told me.
Right. Well, like I said, just if you had an idea, I mean, it's not the chance, or it's not a lot of time that we get a chance to talk to people and get their solutions for what appears to be a problem downtown. So, if you had an idea, we wanted to hear it.
I have personally been parking on 4th Street. It is in front of McClure's now, that I heard that the business owners were upset with us residents. I'm not trying to make the business owners upset. And in fact, I met a lot of fantastic and incredible people on my walk that have businesses or live downtown. So, right now, I have been parking on 4th Street. I live on the corner of 4th and Main. So, the only time there really isn't parking on 4th Street is when the bars are hopping late at night. And then sometimes I do have to park on Main. I try not to do that as much as possible because I did hear that the business owners are upset with us residents.
Thank you very much.
You're more than welcome, sir.
Mr. Meisner, did you have a question or anything? Okay. Thank you.
Next, we have Ashley Krattensberg? Kratsburg?
Good evening.
I guess my part in this is to come and request that you guys take our safety into factor when making this decision. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Recently, and I would like to say that I am here on representing myself, I'm not representing any entities, but because of my position, I was attacked by a former client of mine, where he broke out my window. He was intoxicated and he was on drugs. And I guess my concern is when he gets out, if I have to park two blocks away and walk to my vehicle, that kind of puts me at risk. And the other girls that don't have training to defend themselves, you know, they're walking late at night. We got a lot of bars downtown. The bartender's walking two blocks to their vehicle at 3:00 AM after everybody's drunk and, you know. I live on 4th and Main also, and there has been several incidences down there in the last month. One where a guy got knocked out in the middle of the street and he was missing teeth and, you know, it gets pretty rowdy down there. Another one was a pit bull attack that happened on 4th Street. So, I feel that if I have to walk through that late at night or whatever, you know, and I work graveyard, so, you know, I leave late at night. I feel it, you know. And going, waking up every two hours to go turn my car around or move it would be really inconvenient for me. So, I have, I spoke with a Canyon City police officer, and he had the idea that maybe us residents could have some kind of exemption. I know in my building, there's only two of us that have vehicles anyway, so I don't feel that we're taking up or gumming up parking. We all contribute to the businesses down there. You know, I, I try to keep my business down there because I live there. I go eat at Pizza Madness or Doritos and, because it's in walking distance. So, I guess my concern would be the safety of people walking late at night. I went to find an area to get out of the two-hour parking, and I had to plot, you know, it was like about two blocks away for me to be able to, you know, go there. And I guess I'm just concerned for everybody's safety. I do understand, you know, the issue that you guys are presenting, but I have lived there for seven months, and there's probably only been twice that I couldn't find parking. And I park there every day, so.
Do you, do you work downtown?
No.
Okay. Okay. Any questions of council?
Thank you.
Well, if you would like, our, Tony has given me our city administrator his phone number. I will give that to you. If you would like to have it, you can call him. Or you could, you could call me, but call him first.
Yeah. I'd love to work with, you know, the residents, the employers, employees out there to achieve some sort of optimal solution. We understand your concerns, and I face this issue in every community I've worked in, and there are resolutions to them, so if we can work together, I would agree with you. We can come up with a win-win scenario.
Yeah. I guess I'm just concerned when he gets out of jail, if he decides that he wants to come back for more. I mean, he busted my, he tried to bait my child out of the apartment by telling him he knew my, his mom, and I was at work. And he continued to throw rocks and break my window out of my apartment, so.
Would you like the phone number now, or do you want to give it?
I don't have a pen.
Okay.
If you give it to me when I go over there, I'll write it.
Okay. It's, of course, 719-484-585002. And everybody has my phone number.
Everybody has his now.
Everybody has his.
Tony.
Tony.
Tony, yeah.
Tony, and I'm impressed, and I'm impressed.
So, anyone, you know, in the group this evening, if you could, you know, call me, let's arrange to meet at your convenience, and I'm sure we can achieve a positive outcome.
Okay, yeah. The city is very willing to facilitate that and talk it over, and I believe that a citizens group is very appropriate to guide the government. That's what everybody wants, so that's what we'll do. Go ahead. Kathy?
Next, we have Sheila Kimmel, 37 Eagle Crest, Downtown Parking.
I'd like to also say thank you for hearing us today. And I have first a couple of disclaimers, is that I have a speech defect, and if I stumble over words or trip over one, please, please forgive me. And also, I'd like to clarify one thing because the paper quoted me recently in an article saying that I didn't agree that there was a problem, a parking problem, that is taken out of context with regards to another issue, not as related, but not to the town-town big picture, because there is a problem. So, with that hopefully clarified, I want to share with you my, some of my experience. We've owned the building on the corner of 4th and Main since April 20th, 2007. How about that? So, let me share with you some, some of the history here from my personal involvement down there. And when we look at the failures, because you've mentioned them, that they've, you've seen them come and go, Mr. Troutman, and I agree. And I began with the summer of 2008, when they tried hiring a man, going out and marking the car tires, and the game began, the brake rig display. He'd get a couple of blocks down the road, and out came the 409 and the rags, and they all began to clean it. Then there was the other group of people down, down the street. As soon as he left, they had their telephone, phone friend hotline, and then became the switching of the cars. This went in on all summer long, and it didn't prove to, prove to be productive. And at that time, of course, they just let it go away. And I want to talk now to turn my attention to some of the economics. And before launching into that, though, I want to say, I'm really high on the idea of solution management, conflict resolution. And I think we all want the same things here, but there's a great deal of conflict as to the proper approaches to actually achieving that common goal. And so, we're not here to cause problems. We want to be part of the solution. So, conflict resolution is what we are all seeking. But we have some real problems facing us, and I think by sharing them with you, you'll have a better understanding. I appreciate your openness to hear us. But when I look at the economics, though, on the personal side, I'm sure you've taken into consideration the mere cost of sign replacements if you just increase by three hours. But that still doesn't solve the problem for the employees that are working there that have to leave their stations, close a shop, do go feed a parking, well, move a car or whatever, they get out of their 409, I don't know, whatever. There's also the additional cost of hiring a person to enforce, enforce the restrictions on an already overly burdened police station. I think they're down two right now, and you have to hire another person, and you still have this little game that will be played between them, the count and mouse thing. And then there's the issue, if no one's hired, you know, and you're saying, we say that it's going to be enforced. But then you're opening yourself up to selective enforcement or punitive, punitive enforcement for those carrying personal gingers, such as it is sometimes we see happening. Also, I think it's unfair, unfair to burden or encroach on the side streets. You know, they're going to, this traffic has to go somewhere, and it's going to go there. And they have a vested interest. They may not be an elite downtown Main Street, but they still have shops, they still have customers, and now they even have less parking than we do. So, you're going to create a domino effect here, essentially. Then they're going to be the what, next one standing here on the, before you on the podium. By the way, George gave me his, oh, he left, oh, he gave me his extra minute and a half, okay?
Where's George?
Well, I just, he's just disappeared.
Are you sure?
Yeah, he tucked that, ducked out on us.
Did you get that in writing?
I planned to.
Just, okay, never mind.
Okay. Well, going on, I think also, you know, we, Main Street needs to still maintain, remain accessible and to be attractive to prospective shops, employees, and to residential clients. They're going to be less inclined to come down and open up shop if they can't park near their shop. Employees are going to be less inclined to work down there. Tenants less likely to live there as well. So, what I'm thinking, when I look at this, I think we're missing a huge opportunity. Look up and down Main Street. What you see perhaps is empty shops and a parking problem. I look at the up and down Main Street, do you know what I see? I see customers, hundreds of them. They're in the residence. They're in those shop owners. They're in those employees. They're the ones that eat there often. They're the ones that will go to perhaps Pizza Madness. I can't tell you how many Peaches Madness boxes I see at my tenants' apartments and in my dumpster. Or go to the aisle for lunch, heard it's a wonderful place. Or the brewery after, after work. These are your customers, you guys, a huge base of them. They will shop there. I know some of my tenants that switched their pharmacy to downtown. They will recreate there. So, I'm just going to share a brief story. I had a, I worked for a company that had 68 restaurants, and we had over 2,000 employees. We had an epiphany that said, "Ha-ha! What, do we have 2,000 potential customers right in our hands? What if we could give them an employee discount card to visit us after, you know, they're off work? Bring friends, bring families." When we did that, we saw a 7% increase in sales across the board. This is a huge opportunity. I don't think anybody has even really looked at. I also might want to add here that my tenants are 78% of my revenue for that entire building. That's nearly, and they paid nearly double for their rent on a square footage basis compared to my tenant, commercials. So, they, you know, the, my money actually, when it comes to supporting my revenues, to pay those taxes, you know, that doubled here in the last seven years.
Mrs. Kimmel, we're getting a little long here.
Okay. I'll, I'll try to talk a little bit faster.
Okay, let's wrap it up.
Okay. Shop owners, property owners, they all pay taxes and sales taxes. Page two, very, I'm just going to skip to the, the closing here. I'll sack for you.
Thank you.
Okay. I agree there's a parking, a parking problem, but I, however, do not agree that this is the right solution or the right approach in its entirety. So, I'd like to leave you with a quote from an innovator and a problem solver from past history, Thomas Edison. He was said to have had a bold sign in his lab that said something to the effect, "There is a better..." a better way. Let's find it." So, I would challenge city council members and this community to find it. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have more?
We have another one from Maria Archuleta, nine-ten York Avenue, Parking Downtown.
I am downtown property owner and taxpayer for thirty-five years, and I believe that the parking situation should be left as it is. Because when there, there are restrictions, people will not come downtown. Yes, the flowers are beautiful downtown, but you can also see every other businesses closed. And there must be a reason for that. And I feel that if there is more restrictions, less people will come to eat downtown. If you go to a restaurant, it takes a little while to be served. It takes more than two hours by the time you get out of there, and then you're gonna get a ticket. You're not gonna be coming downtown at all. So, I think it should be left as it is. That's all I have to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Last one.
Joseph Dekook, twenty-nine seventy-three Sierra Court. If you guys in your packet, he submitted a petition of a dangerous intersection. This is the gentleman who submitted that petition, who wants to go ahead and address council at this time.
Like you said, my name is Joseph Dekook, and this petition basically came up with sixty-three signatures. So, in a sense, it's a survey that was a lot cheaper than fourteen thousand dollars. If you haven't driven on Main Street and roads, like going into the Humane Society or out, you need to so you can see how much of a problem it is, safe, safety-wise. Okay. My point tonight is to tell you what you did not see in this petition. Ninety-eight point five percent of those people signed enthusiastically. Only property owners on Countryside Court, Sierra Court, White Pine Court, and Spartan Drive were asked to sign. Two wanted to sign, but they don't drive anymore. So, I only wanted people who drove, so they, okay. Two others from Lincoln Park wanted to sign as they were drivers for their elderly mother who couldn't drive anymore. Eighty signatures would have been easy to get, but part of the problem was my memory isn't what it used to be, and a lot of people asked me to come back when their spouses would be home. What I didn't know was that there were a very high percentage of widows and single women in the area, so I didn't want to be knocking on a door twice when I might be talking to a widow. All of the signatures were, were achieved after three p.m. on one single day. I didn't ask anyone about accidents, but people voluntarily recounted about eight accidents to me. The circular announcing the tarring of roads avenue confused many people who logically thought that it meant that this dangerous intersection would finally be fixed. I, I informed them that wasn't the case. They were noticeably depressed over that. Okay. This petition will be submitted to Fremont County Commissioners Meeting. Thank you for your time. I'll answer any questions from council members.
Any questions of council? Do you all know where, where that's at, Main Street? Go ahead, Mr. Havens.
Did you want to submit that petition to this body?
He submitted it last week to the city engineer, and I copied it for the packets.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Meisner?
Is that intersection in the city limits?
Very unique part, well, half of it is and half of it's not. That's why he's contacting the county as well.
To the east, on the east side of the road.
Yeah. We have, and also, you have a railroad track and everything right there.
Yep.
You know what's that? I just, I didn't know where the boundary was.
That is the boundary.
It is the boundary.
This has been an ongoing issue for over, for twenty-four years, and typically, people get the answer from the city that, oh, we're gonna do something about it, but it never seems to happen. This is a safety issue. That's what's important. This is a safety issue, and I'm sure you've all seen, the little old lady whose eyes are under the steering wheel or just above, they approach, it's a steep incline coming up, she can't see down Main Street, partly because there's so many weeds there, but if she's in a smaller statured car, she can't see the traffic going that way. If you want to go east and you're in a pickup truck, you gotta get out away from the railroad, and by the time you get around that corner, you're in the other person's lane coming this way. So, it's a hazard no matter which way you're going on it. A lot of people who know the intersection, if they see a car coming, they back up. Well, that works, so to let the person turn because there's not enough room. It's an awful narrow intersection, so they will back up so the person get around. But what about the person who is not used to that intersection? It's a problem. And I've had people that come and visit me, and if they've got a pickup truck or something like that, I just say, hey, take this other road, you can go, you know, I give them different ways to go so they don't have to do with that intersection. So, it's unsafe. It needs to be fixed, and basically, these people, because they've been put off so long, want some sort of a winner. Winner, when can we start seeing something being done? Now, there's a lot of things about this that need cooperation between the county and the city, the utility company, and the state, and the irrigation company. So, it's gonna have to involve a lot of working together between different entities there.
Yeah, and the city engineer has that, and there are probably three or four players in that, and I know the section quite well, that intersection. And you need to bring that also up. We need to talk to the railroad, the county, irrigation, just like you said, and that's what, it was just the city, we could probably solve that pretty quickly. So, isn't that right?
Thank you.
Yeah, we'll bring it up. We have a city-county meeting, which, but you need to take that petition to the, to the county, and we have a city-county meeting every month, and we'll bring that up there too. So, we'll pursue it. Book? Anyone else?
That's all I have this evening, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Continuing on, ordinance number ten, a series of two thousand and sixteen. This is the second reading for an ordinance amending the zoning code for transitional mixed use. Could you read by title, please?
This is a bill for ordinance number ten, series of two thousand and sixteen, and ordinance amending Title seventeen of the Canyon City Municipal Code to repeal and reenact Chapter seventeen point fourteen, Transitional Mixed Use Overlay.
May I have a motion for council on the second? Mr. Weed?
Thank you, Mayor. Members of council, I'm Mick. Motion to approve ordinance number ten, series of two thousand and sixteen, on second reading. I'll second.
Mr. Gill, second. Are there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. Could you call a roll, please?
Councilmember Weed?
Aye.
Councilmember Gill?
Aye.
Councilmember Schumacher?
Aye.
Councilmember Meisner?
Aye.
Councilmember Sharaki?
Aye.
Approved by unanimous vote.
Thank you so much. Number eight, ordinance number eleven, a series of two thousand and sixteen. This is the first reading for an ordinance amending the zoning code and the comprehensive sign plan, and could you read that by title, please?
This is a bill for ordinance number eleven, series of two thousand and sixteen, as amended, and ordinance amending Title seventeen of the Canyon City Municipal Code to add subsection seventeen point three, zero point zero seven five, comprehensive sign plan.
Could we have a report from the city attorney?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As you will recall, when we last left off on this item, council had made a minor amendment to the ordinance as first read and deleted the word minimal in one of the later subsections. At this point, that amendment was made, but the ordinance was not passed on, on first reading. It's now amended as requested by city council, or at least staff's understanding of what city council wanted done, and that was to add some language that provided for an appeal from the decision of city council to, or the decision of the city administrator directly to city council as opposed to the Board of Adjustment, which is where it would have gone absent this amendment. So, the changes on, if you look on page two of the ordinance, there's a new item C four in, as part of Section seventeen twenty oh seven five. That's just to trigger the, the thirty-day period during which a party would have to appeal a decision by the zoning administrator. Subsection, or Section D of, subsection D of that section remains the same except for the amendment I previously addressed at D one, the removal of the word minimum. And then, finally, and this is the main item and the reason for the tabling of the ordinance, you'll find a new section, subsection E, F, G, H, I, and J, all of which set out an appeal process respecting the appeal by applicants of a zoning administrator decision on, on this matter. I think the provisions are pretty much self-explanatory, but I will respond to any questions if you have them.
Are there any questions from council? Hearing none. Could I have a motion from council on the second?
I make a motion to approve ordinance number eleven, series of two thousand and sixteen.
As amended on first reading.
As amended on first reading.
And amended on first reading.
Okay.
Second.
Mr. Weed, second. Are there any discussions on the motion? Hearing none. Would you call a roll, please?
Councilmember Sharaki?
Aye.
Councilmember Weed?
Aye.
Councilmember Gill?
Aye.
Councilmember Meisner?
Aye.
Councilmember Schumacher?
Aye.
Approved by unanimous vote.
Okay. That almost concludes the business, but I want to thank you for coming and thank you for your comments. And, and again, we can help as a government and as your council, but we need that direction. And I do think that there should be a citizens' committee that would guide us in that. We certainly would appreciate that. So, I'm gonna adjourn this evening, and thank you all for coming.